All right, welcome everybody. We'll call to order the Grand Forks City Council meeting for Tuesday, January 16th. Roll call, please, Marine.
Weichel.
Here.
Slowski.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Lunskey.
Here.
Cavani.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Vean.
Here.
We have quorum.
Thank you. Item 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1.3, Mayor's Announcements. Not too many announcements. Just wanted to highlight, on January 10th, we did host here a combined township meeting between Ryan Faulkner Township related to the epitome energy project. So want to continue to get the word out about that project, so people are aware. Think it was a pretty productive meeting, but again, you can go back, I believe, and look at that one, but January 10th, that did take place in this chambers. Let's move on to two, awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations.
And 2.1 is primary residence property tax credit.
All right, thank you. I was just going to say a few words about this credit. As you all know, as part of the 2023 legislative session, the state approved a new property tax credit. It was part of House Bill 1158. This comes with no age or income restrictions for North Dakota homeowners, and they can receive up to a $500 credit toward their property tax bill. This goes toward next year's property tax bill. I want to bring this forward just as much awareness as we can about this credit, as there is an application that needs to be filled out. Very simple application, but it's not an automatic credit for taxpayers. So as part of building this awareness, the state did work with counties to get this information out. There was a flyer that should have come in your property tax statement that was mailed out by Grand Forks County. But I do hear that some either didn't see the insert in their mailing, or did not receive. So bringing this forward to you to build that awareness, I would ask all of you, as you come in contact with those that you serve, that you make sure they're aware of this credit application period. There is a window. It was from the 1st of January through March 31st. So trying to prevent as much as possible, people getting surprised come later on in the year that didn't realize they had to apply for it. As long as you apply for it, I've done it myself, you go on there, it takes about two minutes, you're just going to want your property tax statement with you that has your personal number. And then what will happen is that that credit will show, it'll be an offset on your tax bill when you get that tax statement next year. So with that, part of what we're trying to do as far as a city, to make sure there's awareness about this credit program, is we've got a link on our city's website that takes you directly to the application. We've spoken with Mr. Bernstrom about pushing information out on our social media channels. We'll plan to put a message on the February utility bill, so information about how to apply for that will be on there. We also have information posted on our frontline windows at City Hall. But one of the other items I wanted also to bring forward with you is if you are interested in sending a mass postcard mailing, just to make sure it's hitting your mailbox, it's good for your primary residence. So if you're a landlord, you can't get the credit on every property but for your primary residence. But trying in effort to get that word out, if we were to do a mailing of postcards, it would run approximately $6,500. So with that, I would look for your feedback.
I guess I got two quick comments. I think it is very important to get the word out on this. The county's not out any revenue, it's just does the revenue come from the state, or does it come from the local taxpayer? So get the word out, because it's just, the bucket's full to fill up, you know, as many people are going to apply for it, and it just keeps dollars in the community. As far as the postcard, I mean, it's 6,500. If you get 13, if it helps 13 people, it's probably cost effective. I'd imagine it would help more than that. So I think especially this being the first year, the more we can do to get the word out, I think that's a cost we can probably absorb unless somebody else views it differently. But just my thoughts. Vice President Weber?
I'll move in favor of sending out the postcard. I think that's a great idea.
We have a motion, we have a second on that item. Got a second from Ms. Lunskey. Further comment on it, President Sandy?
What's the state doing to let people know?
So what I do know is that they did work with the counties. They put an insert in the property tax statements that went out. I don't know all that they're doing, but I do know that I did see an advertisement, or they must have a campaign on TV where they're getting any information out that way. I saw it on Channel 8. So we just want to make sure we hit as many people as possible.
Are you aware of any mailer that the state's sending out? Or I guess I've heard mixed results from the county mailings. That some people say they've got it, some say they haven't.
Most people passed out when they opened their property tax statements.
And then that thing might have fallen away at that point.
And I'm not sure if Ms. Lazar knows of any mailings.
I believe, I think all that the state has done to this point is include that insert into the property tax statement at that time. I have seen the commercials as well on TV from the state, just telling them that this is what's out there. And I'm unaware of if there's anything further that they're going to do.
Okay, I know I've seen some of the local state legislators. I know we all probably can push it out on social media, but you know, let's be honest, most people aren't on that hopefully these days. And if you are, it's so convoluted with all the garbage on there. But that's for another conversation, I guess. Any other comments related to that item?
As someone that doesn't have cable television and doesn't really watch TV, the advertising on TV isn't helpful for me at all. And as someone that hardly opens our mail, I didn't see the mailer from the state either. So I certainly support us helping get the word out, Mayor. Thank you.
Yep. Mr. Cavani?
Just a thought, if we're doing a postcard, you know, I assume the headline would be to file for your tax credit. If there could be just a link to city services, or 411, you know, just to get more information, just any opportunity to point people back to the city and all the stuff we do. I think if there's a square inch available on the postcard, just to point folks back.
Yes, certainly. And, you know, we find that it's hard to reach people. So we're trying to hit all areas possible. I know the mayor and Mr. Sandy, President Sandy, you're on the radio. If you can try to get it out through that medium, and you know, we'll do this postcard if this passes tonight. Word of mouth, I think, will really help. So anytime you're visiting with those you come in contact with, if you can just ask them to spread the word as well, because unfortunately, a lot of people don't look at that in their mail. And I just would hate for it to end up in the garbage and come by surprise later when it's too late to apply.
All right, Mr. Vean?
Just one quick question. What's the deadline date for having this in by?
March 31st. And for those listening, we do have a link on the city's website, but it is tax.nd.gov/PRC.
Mayor, one more thought?
Yeah, please.
I've been, I don't know, how many years have I been on the council? I've been for almost 14 years now suggesting that the city should offer push marketing. We should be collecting personal cell phone numbers tied to addresses, so that we can mine and send specific targeted messages to people in certain areas of town, or all across the entire city via text message through opting in. I know that there's some consternation for doing that, but I believe the benefits for our community would far outweigh the difficulties of implementing such a system. And I'd certainly like to see that before I die. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, I think definitely as long as it's an opt-in, I think obviously there's privacy concerns there, but that'd be a good conversation to have with John Bernstrom, so we can continue that before you die. All right. All right, we've got, seeing no further comments, we have a motion, a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Motion passed unanimously.
And then 2.2 is the MPO overview.
Mr. Gostad, please.
Yeah. All right, I've taken some time to review the initiating documents to start the, I guess it's the Executive Committee, that's the designated metropolitan planning organization. Just to, you know, as you are aware, any area that has population 50,000 or more is required to have a designated MPO. How it's created, by federal law, there's a couple of statutes. It's 23, United States Code, Section 134, and 49, United States Code, Section 5303 are the kind of the statutes that mandate these metropolitan planning organizations be created. They're created in one of two ways under the federal statute. One is by agreement of the governor and the units of the locally governing body that have at least 75% of the population, and also includes the largest city within the organization. And for us, it's, it sees Grand Forks and Grand Forks, and we're the largest city, or as provided under state and local law. That's another means of creating these. The current MPO, or the Executive Committee, was created by a memorandum of understanding that was approved back in 1982. That was part of the packet that was provided. It created the Executive Committee and designated that as the MPO. Then a letter was sent to the respective governors, both Governor Alqui and Governor Allison, back in the day, to approve the designation of this committee as the MPO. The governors, both governors then approved that the fall of 1982, designated the Executive Committee as the MPO for this particular area. Some of the terms of the MOU, and I understand the MOU is still in effect. The planning process is to be conducted cooperatively amongst the four governing bodies. And cooperatively is an important term, and I'll talk about that in a bit. Also, it calls for the city planning to be the recipient of the funds. And each city has to provide their own local match. The organizational planning process and responsibilities, the MOU calls for the Grand Forks City Planning to be responsible for planning of the greater Grand Forks area. The document also makes it clear that it's not an all encompassing type of an agreement. And it also included an organizational chart that has the governing bodies, the cities above the MPO or the Executive Committee, and then the Executive Committee above some of the organizations like city planning, regional planning, things like that. Then I received what I believe to be the original bylaws. In the bylaws, it calls for membership, a total of eight members, two-thirds of which have to be elected officials. There's two from the city of Grand Forks, two from East Grand Forks City Council members, one commissioner from Polk County, one commissioner from Grand Forks County, and then one representative each from the respective planning commissions from Grand Forks and East Grand Forks. Interestingly, under the statutes that I just recited, it states that when designating for the first time the representation, you're to consider equitable and proportional representation of the population of the metropolitan planning area. And I'm not exactly sure whether that was considered or not, but the statute did require that at the time that this was being organized, that proportional or population base should have been considered, at least in determining how many people would be coming from Grand Forks versus East Grand Forks, for example. The bylaws also called for the Executive Committee to do the plan preparation. There is a number of plans that were included, one of which was the master plan for the airport, and a bikeway plan as well, as well as a long range plan and a short range plan. The adoption for the plan under the original bylaws is a little different than it is under the current bylaws. As originally adopted, it was the plans were to be presented to the city planning commission, and then approved by the governing body of each city. The bylaws also called for amendments. Obviously, there is amendments, and it could be done by a majority vote of the Executive Committee. The current bylaws are a little different. One, it reduced the number of plans that were to be approved by the Executive Committee. One is just the transportation plan, and then the transportation improvement program is also to be approved. The other plans that were in the original bylaws no longer exist. Plan adoption changed as well. Under the original bylaws, as I read them, they were presented to the respective governing bodies of the cities for approval. Now it requires that the Executive Committee seeks cooperation and the advice of the cities. Cooperation is an important term, because it's actually defined under the regulations. Cooperation means that the parties are to work together to achieve a common goal or objective. Consultation is also defined under the regulations. It's a little different. Consultation means to confer and to consider the views of the other parties. Evidently, the change as far as plan adoption occurred in September of 1999. There was a letter evidently issued to then Mayor Owens from the Federal Transportation Department, saying that it was unusual to have the governing bodies of the cities to approve these plans. And as a result, the bylaws changed it about that timeframe, to remove it from approval by the respective governing bodies of the cities to now cooperating with and getting the advice from the respective bodies. Now, the one thing is, again, the cooperation means to work together to achieve a common goal or objective. It is a critical term in the bylaws. The also changed in the bylaws were the amendment process. Now it requires two meetings, the Executive Committee, to approve amendments. So you could approve an amendment to the bylaws at one meeting, you would have to come back to a second meeting to approve it. That was evidently done in August of 1998, that change. And the way I read the minutes, it was done so that board members would have an opportunity to comment. And if they didn't make one meeting, they'd be able to show up at the next meeting and make comment. Interestingly, in one of the minutes from December of 1999, it makes reference that in the Fargo MPO, Fargo-Moore MPO, bylaw amendments are to approve by the governing body, not by the Executive Committee. And I noted that in those minutes. With respect to the Executive Committee, the federal regulations do allow for a redesignation of the designated MPO. Right now, you've got this Executive Committee. It's somewhat problematic in that it required the agreement by both governors, Minnesota and North Dakota, the local governing units that have at least 75% of the population in the largest city. That would be us, right, with the largest city and 75% of the population. But you still need the approval from the Minnesota governor and the North Dakota governor to redesignate and have a differing MPO. Redesignation would also be required, though. And again, you'd have to get the approval of the governors if there was some substantial change in the proportional voting of members. So if you changed the number of votes that Grand Forks had versus East Grand, that would require a redesignation and an approval from the governors. If there is a substantial change in the decision-making authority or responsibilities of the MPO, or if there is a substantial change in the decision-making procedures established by the MPO bylaws. Couple of things I want to point out is that with respect to the scope of planning, there is a list of things that the MPO is to consider, one of which is to promote consistency between transportation improvements and the state and local planned growth, housing, and economic development patterns. Again, this is just one of them. It struck me as something that was brought up particularly with respect to the Cedar City Bridge issue. There are two types of plans that are to be developed. One is the transportation plan. And under the federal law, it's a little different than in the bylaws, because the bylaws talk about cooperating and seeking advice. The federal law talks about the MPO is to consult with the agencies. And again, consultation means to confer and consider views, okay? Then there's the transportation improvement plan. And there, the federal regulations talk about cooperating with the affected public transportation operator. And again, cooperating is defined to mean to work together to achieve a common goal or objective. It's a little different than consultation. And again, cooperation is what exists in the current bylaws, although it does speak of advice and seeking recommendations from the governing body. Also, instructive with respect to the recent issue with the bridge, there is to be illustrative projects that are to be listed. For illustrative purposes, those are items that can't fit within the financial plan, there aren't resources, they'd be something they'd like to, the MPO may want to pursue. But there's no requirement that any of those projects that are listed are selected. And if it's on the illustrative list, in order to move forward with it, the U.S. Secretary of Transportation would have to approve that project in the illustrative listing. So that's a very generalized overview of the MPO, the history of it, leading up to it, and some federal laws relating to the MPO and the Executive Committee. And I'd be happy to answer questions to the extent I can.
All right, open up the council. Any questions from Mr. Gostad, or just general conversation points? President Sandy?
Mr. Gostad, so the makeup of the MPO, in the memorandum, it was defined in the memorandum of understanding originally, the makeup of the MPO, is that correct?
It was not. It was in the original bylaws.
Bylaws, thank you, okay. And so, and the bylaws were created locally, not at the federal level, correct?
Correct.
So some people in Grand Forks and East Grand Forks decided that it should be four members from North Dakota, four from Minnesota, including two, one from each planning and zoning commission, correct?
Correct.
I assume we don't have any sort of documentation as to the logic or the reasoning or how they came to that decision?
I didn't see anything, and I didn't dig into, going back to 1982, what the rationale was from the city council, and I didn't get into that level of detail.
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Cavani, please.
Yes, same question, kind of along those lines. So in 1980, East Grand Forks population was approximately 8,500, Grand Forks was approximately 43,000. And then, as we sit now, we're at 9,158,000, according to the 2020 census. So I just think, either way, if we're trying to create an equitable makeup, you know, and maybe that solution is what resolves some of our discussion points, is if there is, you know, it's set up as equal, but in reality, the impact is not equal. And that's at the heart of the bridge discussion, is the impact is not equal. So I think that if we want to be honest with the MPO's makeup, and be honest with the outcomes of their votes, and as they represent both cities, I think it would have to, you know, be explored. And what's great is that through your research, and I appreciate it, the bylaws were created locally. So the bylaws can be changed locally. Is that correct?
It can be, but be mindful that if you change the decision-making or the voting authority, you may be in the venue of a redesignation, and it may necessitate approval from the respective governors to be able to do that. That may be a hindrance as well.
Sure. Well, I guess I'd just like to bring that up for discussion, then I think others probably have opinions.
Could you walk back over, you talked about proportionality originally, as the federal statute or where this came from federally. How did that not get translated when we did the local bylaws back in the 80s, or was it 1980?
That I don't know. In reading the regulations, it talks about when you're establishing this, the MPO and the board, for the first time, you're to consider that. And I suspect it's when you're, the language of the first time is because if you start changing it, now you've got a redesignation, right? And so that may be why the language exists and for the number of members on the board.
But it seems as if they set it up the first time incorrectly. I mean, that seems pretty clear to me.
Mr. Mayor, I would, Mr. Gostad, perhaps, from a legal aspect, from how the governor of Minnesota might approach this, if the governing body of both communities reasonably agree that making a change would be okay, and then the Executive Committee, who's made up of four people from Minnesota and four people from North Dakota, which they're the ones that have to make the motion second, move, approve, go through two meetings, if they manage to do that, again, maybe I'm asking a rhetorical question, but it seems to me that the governor of Minnesota would have a hard time not going along with that.
It'd be an easier means to advocate for that type of change.
Yeah, certainly.
If everybody's agreeing.
Thank you, Mr. Gostad. Mr. Marine?
If I could, I just, thanks for all the information, because there's always been a question of authority, jurisdiction, and all of that, and the voting. We currently are operating under what we know today to be the correct procedure. And we did, you know, I'll still go back and talk about the voting that we did, and support how that went about. But I think the subject right now is more about authority between the two communities and whatever. And in the bylaws, it said, "The executive policy committee further finds and declares that the continued growth of the area represents problems that are not confined to boundaries or a single county or city." It really looks at us as a metropolitan area, and how do we impact it? Because as I look at that, and then -- Because as I, as I look at that, and then there's one other thing I was going to say, that the area by reason of its governmental jurisdiction presents special problems of development that can be dealt with best by an executive policy committee, because there's going to be so many different things. I think those are some of the base part of the bylaws. When we talk about transportation especially, and of course, I think the only thing that I know of that's been a problem in the 10-plus years maybe I've been on here, is when it's come to a bridge. I mean, by and large, everything flows well. We support East Grand Forks, East Grand Forks supports us. It has worked extremely well. The question has, that has come up now, has been, and it's been in these councils for me, years, decades probably, about the bridge issue. But when I looked at the bridge issue, it's this. Grant, the transportation plan has to look at us collectively. Doesn't matter where that traffic originates from, it does matter where the problem exists. So we have traffic in Grand Forks from more southeast-west. It comes from all different directions, right? And if, if we have an issue at the Alara Center, it can come off of Interstate, or it comes on Highway 2. All of those things are issues that impact the city of Grand Forks. Some will look at an inner-city bridge as potentially ease for traffic from East Grand Forks to get to Grand Forks. That may be true, I won't deny that. But the inner-city bridge, if you looked at the study and you've gone through, and I've researched all through those numbers, and you see that the inner-city bridge or any bridge is, is there to alleviate traffic congestion in Grand Forks. Because that adding of that bridge now, and I, again, I can show you the numbers, how it impacts, and actually, it impacts Gateway Drive, it impacts South Washington Street, it impacts Fourth Avenue and Minnesota. It specifically, if, and you look at each bridge, and then you look at a citywide perspective for how that impacts people well away from the bridge. So when we're looking at this, it's not about, is East Grand Forks getting an easier way to here? It is a part of the solution, but it's really a part of a much bigger issue. It's about the transportation and the safety, the safety of traffic within the community at large, because it goes well beyond the location where the bridge is. And, and you can look at it, and so I looked at it. I mean, I look at the inner-city bridge, and you know, this time around, we decided best, don't, don't go back to that. Don't select a location. Look at an inner-city bridge and what that impact would be. And each one has a little bit of differences, but it's still, it still is going back to look at the value it brings to it. I thought, well, what about me? I'm in Ward 7. But it impacts the traffic on Demers Avenue, and it impacts congestion on Washington Street, and especially the intersection of Washington and Demers. So, and that's, impact is quite large when you start looking, because we have three bridges that are all downtown. So all that traffic then has to go around and come in down Belmont Road, or it comes down Washington, where having a bridge alleviates that traffic. And it's, it's really a region-wide support. I, I'm not looking at what East Grand Forks benefits from, but what the metropolitan area benefits from, from having a bridge, because it's, it's just much larger. And, and again, I think the important thing is, I'd have the data that supports that. It's not just my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Veen. Any other comments for this evening on the MPO? Mr. Weber, please.
Thanks. Mr. Gostad, you helped us to understand the tension between designation and bylaws. Designation, more or less state-level or even federal, bylaws, local. And it was suggested that if there was local consensus to change the bylaws, the governors might be persuaded to consider that in a redesignation. But it was also asked what evidence we have for how they made the decision in 1982. And the bylaws on, under powers and duties and under adoption, use language like harmonize and review and recommendation, not approval, review and recommendation. And harmonizing suggests that we may have different strengths, different abilities, but we come together as a single voice to let the states and federal funding mechanisms know what we have agreed upon. And it seems to me, in that language, that language may reveal why the designation was made, not in terms of proportionality, but in relation to what Mr. Veen is just described, the need to consider the needs and function of the entire area. I made a statement, not a question, but is that kind of language, does it make sense to think that that helps reveal something about the decision process in 1982?
It certainly can.
It can?
It can. And I'm not discounting your statement, Councilmember Weber. I think it, when you use language like that, it is suggestive as to having equality. And then, but then you've got the other, it seems somewhat inconsistent then to have the city council members to approve the plan, right? Now all of a sudden, it, you could have one city not approve a plan versus another one, and now you've got that harmony language seems to be a little disjointed. So there seems to be some inconsistency in, within the original bylaws themselves. And so an argument can be made unless we want to dig into, and I'd be more than happy to, and I'm sure Sherri would be able to find all the minutes from 1982 in a heartbeat. I'd be more than happy to read them and try to glean from there what, what the thought process was. The problem is, is that a lot of the, like Mayor Westman, I think, that was there, I don't think he's around anymore, and Mayor Murray from East Grand Forks, he's not around either to be able to talk, and that's, that's what happens when you try to go back and try to figure out what happened historically.
Thank you, thanks.
I guess the only point I would make is we have a unique, we have a multi-state MPO, and I think you can talk harmony and harmonization all you want, so we may have that in Grand Forks and East Grand Forks, but I don't think you're getting similar policies out of Bismarck that you are in St. Paul necessarily, and conflicts could certainly arise there in the future, as we've seen this bridge discussion, and I don't want to go back to that, but it's, you know, clearly you have Minnesota regulation impacting what would happen in North Dakota. That, to me, breaks apart some of that harmonizing, whether we like it or not, our capitals are in a different area.
Mayor, I had one, you know, when I read through this, and I think, Ken, you may have, or Councilmember Veen, you may have the institutional, when you read through that, I think maybe the compromise was the city of Grand Forks, through our planning department, would be the administrative lead on this. And so, I've never met him, but there was a legendary city planner named Bob Bushfield, who was the city planner and MPO director. And then sometime in the, in the 1990s, one thing led to another, and ultimately, that Mr. Bushfield did not move forward and, with employment with the city of Grand Forks, and then the MPO executive was separated from the city planner. So, but when I read through that, I think, if you're going to do equal representation, I think getting in the minds of the policymakers is that, but Grand Forks would assume the administrative authority under, under the city planner, and that was probably their, the compromise on this whole thing. If you look at it today, certainly that's not the case. There's a separate MPO executive director. Our city planner is not leading that, so it really has transformed to more of an independent from the city administration. So, and I know, Mr. Veen, back in your days as a city engineer, you would have worked with Mr. Bushfield, and he was, it seemed to me a powerful force administratively, and you know, you have him to thank for Columbia Road, so why, when you ask yourself, why is Columbia Road looks so nice with those monument signs, that was Bob Bushfield? And so, there's reasons why things look the way they do, but I, maybe, Mr. Veen, if you could provide your thoughts on how it worked then versus now, when you were a city engineer?
Interesting question. I don't know how to exactly answer that. I think, from what I could tell, everything worked well, except the bridge issue back then, as it does today. The reality is, what I was going to say, what's different today especially is, is now, not only we have both cities, we have both counties that are on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and you have planning and, or you have both counties and P&amp;Z and city on both sides. It isn't just the city making decision as in city council representation, because you can have a difference, which we did, between planning and zoning and the city council. And then you have that, that other fourth wheel out there, which is the county, which doesn't have a lot of involvement in any of this either, although there are items out in the county that are on the tip, like the intersection of Business 2 and Highway 2, I think is outside the city of East Grand Forks. Airport road intersection was another one that I think we dealt with. So, but it's got, it's pretty, it's more convoluted, although a majority of all projects, if you look at it, and I looked it up, we got $100 million worth of projects on the line here that belong to the city of Grand Forks, and that's huge.
All right, any further comments, Mr. Cavani?
One little comment. So when we talk about the makeup, is just looking at Fargo, you know, the policy board, you know, there's six members from Fargo, three members from Moorhead, two from West Fargo, one from Dilworth, one from Horace. It just seems like they've, there's, there's quite the blend. There's, you know, two different counties, four different cities, two different DOTs. It's just this great blend, but it, it's proportionate, I think, you know? And that's, that's all I'm saying. I'm not saying that everything that the MPO hasn't worked or not worked, I'm just saying that maybe, maybe we want to ask, maybe we want to ping the governor's office and say, is there appetite if we decide we want to change this?
Yeah, President Sandy?
Thank you. So, Mr. Gostad, help me understand, and I know you walked right through this and fed me down this path, and now I've already forgotten. At what point was the executive director position defined within the bylaws?
That, I think, started getting developed in about the late 90s, is based upon some of the minutes I've read. It looks to me like that, that got implemented within the, within the bylaws.
So did that replace the authority of the planning director of the city of Grand Forks?
That, I don't know. All I'm looking at is the, is the bylaws and when the executive director was.
I understand. I'm just trying to understand if our, the director of our planning department still has the authority that was originally granted. Todd says no, but how do you know that, Todd?
Well, I would say I know that because of how we function currently.
I understand how we function. I'm wondering what the, what legally it says.
I think if the bylaws changed in the late 90s, it kind of fits the whole city planner, Bob Bushfield, transition in separation from our city planner at that point in time.
Okay. To, to Mr. Cavani's point, I think part of the issue that we're, our hands are, like, our hands are tied. There isn't one thing that I can do, or the mayor can do, or Mr. Cavani can do to change this situation. I do believe that this is a matter of fairness, and right now, I don't believe it's fair. As an aside, I don't believe that two non-elected people should be members of the MPO executive committee. I just don't think that's right. I think the decisions that the MPO executive committee are making have to do with our city laws, our ordinances, and, and the spending of our tax dollars. I don't think non-elected people should be responsible for that. I'm not sure what to do about that. If I had my way, we would replace the, the members from the MPO with the mayors of both cities. To me, that, that seems rational. But I, I can't make that change. The only way to make that change is somebody on the MPO executive committee has to go in, make that motion, get a second, have three other people, including somebody that lives in Minnesota, to agree at two meetings, and then perhaps have the governor of Minnesota sign that. Why it should be, why that change should go all the way to the governor of Minnesota, I'm not.
Councilmember, President Sandy, I'm not sure, because you're not really changing the proportionality as far as voting or the decision-making or anything like that. I don't know if that would necessarily constitute a redesignation, because all you're doing is replacing one representative from the city of Grand Forks for another representative. You're just designating what, what qualities that person has, whether they're elected official or not.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gostad. You're certainly better suited to know that answer than I am. Further to that concept, however, as a matter of fairness, I don't believe having equal proportionality between Grand Forks or Minnesota and North Dakota, I don't believe that that makes sense. And again, I'm in the same position as I was related to having the mayor or somebody from Planning and Zoning. I can't make that change. All I can do is sit here and say, I think that that's something we should do. I don't know what, what the right makeup is. In my opinion, at a minimum, the city of Grand Forks should have one more voting member than East Grand Forks or the state of Minnesota, because we should at least be the tiebreaker if there is something that is dividing us on a state line. If, if, if I could make a motion that our MPO members take that to the MPO executive board, motion and second it, and move that forward, and see if we can make any traction with that, I, I would have a hard time believing that the folks in Minnesota would agree to that. But here, here we are, and we are, I'll say handcuffed, we are handcuffed by the state of Minnesota on some very important issues. And to, to what Mr. Veen was saying about the bridge, I didn't know that this was a bridge conversation, but since you brought up the bridge, there are eight members of that board, right? And let's say, representation fell upon the lines based upon population, and there, let's call it six to two, if there were six people from North Dakota and two people from Minnesota, I think we come, I think that group comes to the same conclusion that we did, or would. I don't know what conclusion they would come to. Here's what I believe. If you think the answers and the data that you have is correct, and you're making the right decision, why wouldn't five other people from North Dakota make the same choice, regardless of where they live within our community? They, logically, they would. They would follow along, because logically, that makes sense. So why wouldn't we have proportional membership on the MPO? And I know that's not a you, that's, this has nothing to do with you, Mr. Veen. I'm just, I, I believe that that's the way, that's the way it should work. Thank you, Mr. Veen, and thank you, Mr. Gostad.
I guess, do you want me to take that as a motion?
Yeah, I would make that motion.
So we, I guess we have a motion to direct, I'm just trying to clarify and tell them if I'm right here, to direct our MPO members that are on the city council to bring that forward to the, to the MPO, asking for an additional member essentially on the Grand Forks side, which would give us the tiebreaker.
That's what I would like to see.
And we might get Burgum to sign off, I don't know if.
And I would doubt, yeah, who knows, but.
All right, we have a motion, we got a second from Mr. Cavani. Any further discussion on, on that motion before we vote upon it? Let me grab Ms. Osowski first, then we'll go to you, Mr. Weber.
So we're just directing them to go back and, like, kind of vote to get an additional member, if that's right? All right, thank you.
Mr. Weber?
Mr. Gostad, a few minutes ago, I was talking about language that might reveal intent back then. Instead, let's take what President Sandy is proposing, and, and just one, one member. But, and, and before I go into that, let me recognize that I believe the purpose of the MPO includes twin goals. One is to determine what is best for the transportation needs of our shared metropolitan area. And the second goal, twin to that, would be to attract as much state and federal funding, outside funding, to support those needs as possible. I think that that's essential business of the MPO, those two things. And when we had an earlier vote some, some weeks ago, President Sandy, I said that if we moved forward with that, I would support you in this, this project of proportionality. But we're having the discussion, and we never commit one another to those, we always listen to the discussion. And if we had just one more vote, it seems to me that that would. And if we had just one more vote, it seems to me that that would, in, in essence, give Grand Forks, my earlier question about harmonizing and recommending and reviewing, if we had just one more vote, that would give us unilateral veto authority, that that would give us basically dictatorial powers over the whole process. We would no longer have to worry about what the county and the counties, or the, our neighbors across the river think. We could just dictate what, what we want to move forward. And in doing so, we may harm one of the most important functions here, which is to attract state and federal funding. Because I believe that that language recognizes, that language of harmonizing and review and recommend, that that language recognizes that we need to present to the two state governments and the federal government, that we're doing what's best for the metropolitan area, and not for just one city. And I think, again, I've walked myself into a situation where I've not asked a question, but I've made a statement. But would that give us potentially unilateral veto authority, dictatorial power, having just one extra vote?
Councilmember Weber, the premise is that we go from eight to nine members on the MPO. Right now, the city has three, two elected officials and, and the representative from planning and zoning. So you'd go from three to four. You still, the city of Grand Forks, on its own, would not have the majority vote.
And I would contend that East Grand Forks has unilateral veto authority over us right now, which they did, at the, when they were voting for the 2050 long-range transportation plan. They put us in a box.
Because a tie...
We had no way out of it.
Is a defeat.
That's right, because a tie is a defeat. Because for your exact reasoning, we have to have an approved long-range transportation plan. We have to. Mr. Veen knows it, Ms. Lunskey knows it, which is why they did what they had to do to make sure that we had an approved plan. I don't believe that that's reasonable or fair to the city of Grand Forks when we're 87% of the population.
And you're also recognizing that, that your motion probably doesn't have a snowball's chance.
That's right. It probably doesn't, but it also, it is a statement in itself, and if the folks on the MPO from Minnesota want to deny it, then we can have further discussion about that, about what's fair and who's trying to be a good partner, harmonizing.
Thanks.
Mr. Veen.
I, I actually understand exactly what you're saying, and what I, what I'm concerned about is how well that works and the ramifications and understand it. Like, typically, when we have discussions here, we have a committee of the whole, and then we go to a council, we get to take some time to do some investigation and understand maybe the implications. I'd like to go back and hear a little bit more what Mr. Gosted said about this whole process, and maybe even Mr. Phelan, what you described even back in 97, to kind of understand some of that that happened, because I know that happened right in prior, the issues with Mr. Bushfield was right at the times of the 97 flood. So there were some pretty good impacts to us that happened then. So I personally can say I'd, I'd actually consider it, but I don't feel informed enough to, to vote in favor of it without having a better line of discussion, including discussions with our Minnesota counterparts. I have no problem having that and being wide open with the, with the conversation. But I don't feel, not that I'm not against it, I don't feel prepared to vote for it.
Okay. Well, I think, I mean, for me, one of, I mean, the simple question, put the bridge aside, as a Grand Forks city council member representing a ward in the city of Grand Forks, do you think it's beneficial for the city of Grand Forks to have more representation on the board that can effectuate planning, potential grants? I mean, to me, that's a pretty easy question, if you're representing the city of Grand Forks, regardless of all the other conversations. And we've had two weeks to discuss this quite at length, and I, and it would have been hard not to read the tea leaves, if that's where President Sandy was going with this. If you listen to anything he's said the last, well, 12 years, but I guess, to me, that's what I see as the bigger question, and I mean, you, you certainly, there's a motion and a second, so you can, you know, vote as you wish, based on, on your preparedness to, information-wise, but any other comments? Ms. Slonsky.
So my, I have a hypothetical question. If, if what happened, if, if Grand Forks had three members, and the vote passed three to four, then does, would those three members vote the same way at the MPO, or, or would, would there be a split, or could there be a split? Because like Ken and I both voted how we thought the council wanted us to, not how we felt. So I'm just thinking, if there was three of us, would, would we all three vote how the council wanted, or is there some discretion there?
Absent a motion directing council members to vote in a certain manner, I think you do have some ability to exercise some discretion.
If you could, I think that's, that's kind of a larger question that I've had in my mind, too, about what authority do you have? Because we've had, I mean, five years ago, the city council voted in favor of, in that case, the 32nd Avenue Bridge as a part of the plan, but not everybody in the city council supported it. You know, you, you all felt you had the right to, to think for yourself. You didn't have to support the direction of the city council, right? And that same type of thinking kind of persists here now when we're on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Do you, which, but we chose, I can't say you, I chose to still represent the city council. And the reason why I chose in that case was because we compromised. And that, that was, that's politics. Sometimes you don't get what you want, you've got to compromise, but we did. But, but that's my only thinking. I just, I, I'd like to, I'm a thinker, I'd like to contemplate this thing and note that implications are, and understand truly, because you make a good argument, Mayor. I mean, you do it. I'm trying to represent us, what is the right thing. But then, I don't know why you have an MPO anymore, to be honest with you, because we're going to, if we all vote our lines, we're just going to win. So why don't we just take control?
President Sandy, and then why don't we...
I would contend that majority rules, we should win if, if the council decides that that's the way things should be. So I would, if I can make one other suggestion, I'd love to be able to, I can't make the MPO meetings in person. I'd love to be able to watch the MPO meetings, listen to them, hear what's going on, understand the nuance. If we could offer our council chambers and Mr. Brunstrom, or whomever is available, to put the meetings out on Facebook, or TV, or, or anywhere where we could actually be able to review them and see what's going on, that would be great. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, seeing no further discussion, Ms. Dorsted, we just want a roll call in some, in a random order for that vote.
Sure. Osowski.
Yes.
Weigel.
Yes.
Yes? Weber?
No.
Lunskey?
Yes.
Veen?
No.
Cavani?
Yes.
And Sandy?
Yes, thank you. I got a five-two, is that correct? Motion passes five to two. I think we'll have to look at some details as you head in there, but thank you. Anything further on MPO, please?
If you don't mind, we do have an MPO meeting tomorrow. So we'll, we'll, I'm more than willing to bring this up and have that discussion, because our agenda is actually pretty small, as I've seen it, so just, just a heads up. Anybody's welcome to come, to be honest with you. It's a public meeting.
Where is the meetings? Yeah, where are they held at?
In East, in East Grand Forks City Hall.
And has it always been in East Grand Forks, the last number of years?
It has since, yeah.
Forever.
For the last, since around 2000 or so.
Is there a reason that it's over there? Is there a reason the offices are over there?
No. In fact, Mr. Phelan, we've had some discussions about that in years past, right?
We have. You know, we've gone through a multi-phase transition here at City Hall with space utilization, so I think there was an interim time period where we didn't have space, because we've been renovating floors, and so we can re-engage. I used to be, it was one or two people that would be in our city planning, and then one or two over in East Grand Forks at City Hall, and now all of those folks reside in East Grand Forks at their city hall, where they have their meetings, I believe, right outside their offices.
Yeah, on the main level, in a conference room.
Maybe a first step is to bring them back over to Grand Forks for the meetings, so that we can televise, and everybody can have them. That would, that would be a good first step.
It is currently on Zoom. I don't know if it's public. Stephanie might know.
Stephanie, can you give us some color? Is it recorded? Is there, are they able to go back and watch? Is it a Zoom one and done?
We do have the Zoom option, so you're welcome to that link at any time, as well as the minutes that are taken are basically verbatim.
Can you push the record button when you start the Zoom meeting? And have those available?
Yep, we do record those as well.
Okay. That'd be great. Maybe that's a solution, too. Thank you. Any further discussion on item five, two-point-two? Yeah, all right, we'll move on then. Item three, public hearings, second readings of ordinances, there are none this evening, so forward be act, sorry, citizen comments as it relates to action items. Do we have citizen comments as such this evening, Ms. Dorsted, or Ms. Luntmark?
No, we have none.
All right. With that, move on to five, action items. I believe staff looked at five-three. We had some additional information on five-six, and then five-seven. Two of those are three-three votes. Any other items outside of five-three, five-six, and five-seven that council members want for discussion? Say it again, sorry.
Five-five.
Five-five.
And five-four, Mayor, please.
Five-four, perfect. Just want to give a minute. So right now, we've got five-three, five-four, five-five, well, five-three to five-seven. Hold. Just give a moment, I don't know, Mr. Weigel, if you've got a chance to review as well. All right, hearing no others, I'd be looking to consent, agenda move forward, five-point-one, five-point-two, five-point-eight, five-point-nine, five-point-ten, five-point-eleven, five-point-twelve, five-point-thirteen, five-point-fourteen, five-point-fifteen, five-point-sixteen, five-point-seventeen, and five-point-eighteen, if I get a motion of such. Motion approved from Ms. Osowski, second from Mr. Weber. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries unanimously. So we would have five-three through five-seven, Ms. Dorsted.
Five-point-three, river crossing study update and amendment request.
Mr. Phelan.
Mayor Bochensky, I, I think we, we got our money's worth on that first phase of the SRF consulting study. So at last week's meeting, I asked for Mr. Holti from SRF Consulting to be available for a presentation, and I think one of the things that we didn't expect him to say is that there's this little-known 1970s-era Minnesota DNR regulation regarding all bridges needing to be out of a floodway or floodplain. And so that was all new information, just so you know, that was breaking news when he did present that. But I think it shows the importance of going through that phase one of the study, because really, that was intended to, if there are some showstoppers as part of moving forward with one of the river crossing areas, that's what we were supposed to find. So I'm thankful that Mr. Holti found that, followed up on it, and then, and briefed that, so I think it provides some clarity for all of us. And I know we talked a little bit about the MPO and what, whether we should have county representatives, but I think in this case, it's, it's good that we have county representation, because really, that inner-city bridge is not going to work, and, and Mayor Bochensky had conversations with Mayor Gander. He agrees, Mayor Gander agrees. I've had conversations with Reed Hutton, my counterpart in East Grand Forks, he agrees that a high bridge is not going to work, we started there. And so it really focuses our energy on the Maryfield Bridge, which is in both Polk County and, and Grand Forks County. And that bridge is only going to get done if we all, all four forces move, try to move that forward. And so what I was told today by Mr. Hutton, and is Polk County has approved their cost share, and previously, East Grand Forks, and, and Grand Forks have approved their, subject to everybody else joining, and we're the last entity. And so today, or this evening, the mayor and I are asking that you approve our cost share, and we specify that our cost share would go towards that truck bypass crossing, otherwise known as the Maryfield Bridge location. That's, we, we would like you to move forward this evening. Thank you, Mr. Phelan. I can, I can just follow up. Did I have a conversation with Mayor Gander? I know you reached out to your counterpart in East Grand Forks, and right now, the high bridge is the only option, according to the Minnesota DNR rule regulation from 1978. With that being the only possibility, the high bridge is not feasible, and I told him we're, we'll not spend any more dollars on that, and he agreed. He said he'd stand right behind on that. With the high bridge being the only option, it's time to move on. So I think, I think we do need to, I don't want to be here 50, well, I'm not going to be here 50 years from now, but I don't want anybody to be here 50 years from now saying, man, I wish somebody would have done something at Maryfield, because now we have the same problem. So why don't we focus our efforts on that, get that done, at least in, in a direction that's moving forward? And I, I don't think we should lose the work that's been done to date, so I do think there is some value with our stipulation that this, this goes towards Maryfield. We're not, there's no interest in, in the neighborhood bridge. It's time to put that, that to bed, under what we know right now. I guess that's my thoughts on it, but ultimately, council has to, has to agree. So please, Mr. Sandy, President Sandy, please.
Mayor, I, I was taken aback by Mayor Gander's quotes in the paper today, and his agreement regarding the bridge and the high bridge at 32nd, specifically at 32nd Avenue South, and I really appreciate, and I, I thank him for, I mean, he said that he wasn't for a high bridge, that it was supposed to be a neighborhood bridge, it's supposed, and he's sticking to his word, and I really, really appreciate that. Also, in, in the article that was written today, it was a very good article, by the way, and I'm going to read a little bit, so my thanks to the Herald for letting me grab some of this. "Gander Said That While A High Bridge At 32nd Avenue South WON'T HAPPEN, SOMETHING NEEDS TO BE DONE ABOUT THE CONGESTION BY PHOENIX ELEMENTARY SCHOOL AND BELMONT ROAD." I will also thank the mayor for being very concerned about the citizens of Grand Forks when he's not a Grand Forks citizen. This is very good. I really appreciate that he recognizes us. Quote, "The bottleneck that the Point Bridge is, and the extra-heavy traffic that's being put along Belmont by Phoenix Elementary, it's got to be corrected," Gander said. There's no... Pay special attention to this. "There's no amount of safety structure or feature that can be added to make that safe. The corridor is just not made for it." Mayor, I would move that we, instead of funding this study, we take that money and, and study how to close the Point Bridge. I will make that motion.
All right. I, I guess we've got a motion on that, that, I mean, it not being on an agenda item, I don't know. Do you, do you want to have a vote on that? Mr. Gosted, give me some guidance on that, what your preference is. I'm trying to, we do, it's river crossing study update.
The, the Mayor Gander has said, very, there is no safety feature we can do to make that safe. It crosses Belmont Road and Phoenix Elementary? We ha, we've all agreed that we have to do something to keep the kids safe there, and he's specifically said there is nothing we can do to make it safe. The only solution is closing the Point Bridge, Mayor.
I, I hear you. Mr. Gosted, how would you take, we got a motion and a second at this point, and I, I don't, I don't know if it directly is, is connected to the action, I'd like to have a public comment if we were to do that, but certainly...
It is, you've got a motion. I don't, don't know if I heard a second yet.
Ms. Osowski, second to the motion.
Oh, she did, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. You've got a motion and a second. The issue is that it, item five-point-three is the study for a bridge, construction of a bridge. It's not a study to remove a bridge. And so with all due respect to both Council President Sandy and Council Member Osowski, the, the agenda requires, I think it's unanimous consent by the members of the council to approve a modification to the agenda. So if the council is going to consider that motion, we'd have to have, first, you'd have to have a motion to allow it to be added to the agenda. Otherwise, it certainly could be added to the COW at the next meeting.
Well, you know, I think what we could, since there's really no action, no item that's going to require, you know, at this stage, you see the look into it, maybe getting a vote, just so that we have, we know where council's at, because then we know whether to put it on the committee of the whole or not. How about you change your motion to adding it to the committee vote for discussion?
Yes, well, I don't, I, I will rescind my motion, if that's okay with Ms. Osowski, and we can consider moving this to a future committee of the whole meeting.
Okay. Do you want to have a vote upon that?
I don't think it's necessary, Mayor.
Okay, you're content with rescinding that? All right.
I think people, I think everyone's on board, so.
All right. You think everyone's on board. All right, moving on then, as it relates to item three-point-three, any further discussion on that, or, or motions as, as you wish?
I, again, Mr. Mayor, I'm, although I agree with your concept, supporting Maryfield Bridge, if, if we can direct the funds to support the Maryfield Bridge, I, I guess I can get on board with that. Thank you, Mayor.
Is that a...
Again, Mr. Mayor, although I agree with your concept, supporting Maryfield Bridge, if we can direct the funds to support the Maryfield Bridge, I guess I can get on board with that. Thank you, Mayor.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Ms. Osowski's back. All right, a second, perfect. Any further discussion on that? Mr. Veen?
I just have one comment. I guess I'm really happy to hear that we can only build a dry bridge. So I do live on the north end of town, and sometimes when the other bridges are closed during the flooding season, it does get pretty congested over there. So as long as it's a dry bridge, I'm in support.
Okay.
Mayor Bocinski, I think it's really important. You noted, we're already developing south of 62nd. It's conceivable, within the next 20 years, we're going to be approaching Maryfield Road. And if we don't get that corridor shaped up, someone 20 years from now is going to say, why didn't we get that done? So that's, I think that's why it's more critical and strategic that we start moving now rather than later, because we know development's going in that direction.
And roughly, Grand Valley really incorporates a quarter section there, which, you know, you're a half mile away at that point, I guess, from that bridge. That's a good point. Any further comments? Mr. Veen, please.
Yeah, a question, maybe Todd, Mr. Phelan, you could answer this. The Maryfield Road Bridge, of course, isn't in the city limits. It's a county bridge, right?
It is.
It's not a city bridge. How do we support the county in building a county bridge? Is there, what would that look like?
I think it'd look like, I think what people envision of a MPO would look like. We would have, just like we have agreements with all four entities, moving forward with that bridge, we'd have a funding agreement between the two states, the two counties, and the two cities, that we would help cost share from a local perspective. And that we would put all of our energy in that, because even though it's in the county, we're willing to help cost share on that. And, I mean, similar to what we're, you know, the indoor sports and aquatic, what does that have to do with the city? Absolutely everything and absolutely nothing. But without the city leading it, we wouldn't even be talking about it right now. And what I'm saying is, without the city of Grand Forks getting behind the Maryfield Bridge, we will not have a bridge there in 20 years. And I've always said, the city of Grand Forks is the partner that needs to lead to get things done. Certainly, we should have more representation on the MPO than everyone else. However, we're the ones who get things done. And without us pushing our county to get this thing done, it's not going to happen. And we need to say this is our number-one priority. We're willing to help partner and cost share on this whole thing, because we want to get it done, because time is of the essence to us, because it's going to be city growth that's going to impact Muralford Road. It's not going to be county growth. It's going to be city growth. And that's why we should be all in on this.
Yeah, and I would agree. I think time is of the essence, because what I saw, if we would have done this 20 years ago when this first came up, you know, we were like a tenth of the price of where they are. It's gone up astronomical, and if we don't do it now, it's only going to go up more. I don't care where we put it. There's some value to trying to do that. The problem I have is still, I'll go back to the data, it does very little to impact the bridges downtown. It has the least amount of benefit to the safety issues that are there now and will grow. No matter what we do, it's not just those, like I said earlier, when I got off tangent and talked about bridges earlier, but those things still exist. We still, this is not a bad decision, but we still haven't solved the problem. Mr. Sandy's solution is an interesting one, not that I'm supporting it, but that now then will only push the traffic to demur. And you think we got congestion and problems now, it's going to get, it's going to get that much worse, because now then we only have two bridges in the whole city. That's, we can talk about that at the committee of the whole, but I mean, that does create some issues. The other thing I wanted to just mention, I don't know if it, well, I think it's got a possibility, or I wouldn't bring it up, but when there was an impasse between North Dakota and Minnesota on the Fargo diversion project, I was the governor's designee for a task force that worked between, to resolve the differences between the two states. And it was only because of that that the Fargo diversion is being built today, because there was serious conflicts between the two that weren't able to be resolved unless the two governors and others got involved. And we did it. We able, because of that task force, we were able to resolve the differences. I have to believe that we could do something very similar to resolve the differences, even on an inner-city bridge. I see no reason why we can't at least try, because we need, we need to resolve the traffic issues that we have, and this new bridge will not do it. It will have some help. Every bridge has some benefit. But if you look at the numbers of traffic volume, it's going to be there. Even in 2050, you're only around 5,000 vehicles, which is quite small compared to the 12,000 or more that you'll have on Minnesota. That's what that projection shows. Unless we do an inner-city bridge, we've got serious problems. And I would agree, you look 25 years down the road, we want to have a Maryfield Bridge. You can't argue against that. But I think you can't close your eyes to the inner-city bridge, too. I don't know if it can happen, but we, you know, I was working for the city back in 84, I suppose, when a child was killed on Gateway Drive while we were doing reconstruction of Gateway Drive. And we immediately built an underpass at Wilder School as a change order, because we didn't want to put children at risk. And I still think we want to be very careful with how we look at this and close the door to an inner city. We're not saying where. Let the processes figure that out. We learned from last time not to be there. But I have a hard time just saying this is it, and ignore the fact that the last five studies that the MPO has gone for five years have all said you need an inner-city bridge. And now we're solving this by saying we don't. I can't go along with that, although I do agree we need a Maryfield Road Bridge.
Thank you, Mr. Veen. President Sandy?
Mr. Veen makes some very good points. I think the city of East Grand Forks, I mean, we all know that I did my show a few weeks ago and kind of showed the geography of Grand Forks and East Grand Forks. East Grand Forks has a problem in Southeast Grand Forks. They have, they're narrowed in to the point, they call it a point for a reason, and they only have one bridge that goes between Northeast Grand Forks and Southeast Grand Forks, and then one bridge to get from Southeast Grand Forks into South, well, downtown Grand Forks. And so we are there proposing, the proposal that is being pushed by East Grand Forks is put a bridge where no one lives in East Grand Forks, yet a whole bunch of people live in Grand Forks. I would contend that the majority of the people, the residents, which we, I think we agree, I heard you say it, that it's a way for people in East Grand Forks to get to Grand Forks, that bridge, right? More people live in Northeast Grand Forks than in Southeast Grand Forks, many more. So why, I suggested a bridge at 27th Avenue North in Grand Forks, which comes in just south of the golf course in East Grand Forks, where there's a large stretch of area of land up there before you get to any residential homes. And so we can build a high bridge at 27th Avenue North. It doesn't make the people in Grand Forks angry, because there aren't a bunch of homes up there. It won't, because of the distance from the river to the residences in East Grand Forks, it shouldn't be in anyone's backyard in East Grand Forks, and it's actually by where the people in East Grand Forks live. Yet we don't talk about that, because East Grand Forks, they want to develop south. I don't care how they want to develop. All I want to do is move their people from East Grand Forks into Grand Forks and not intrude in the citizens of Grand Forks. For me, this is super easy. I'll support your inner-city bridge all day long. Let's put it where it makes sense for our community. Thank you, Mr. Veen.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. I believe we got a six to two, sorry, five to two in favor. Motion passes.
5.4, Indoor Sports And Aquatics Complex Update.
Thank you. President Sandy?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, so I had the privilege of going back and looking at, when I was preparing for tonight's meeting, I went through all the agenda items again. And when looking at the indoor sports and aquatics complex PowerPoint presentation, I didn't recognize last week when we were talking about it, the work split, the percentage of work by phase of the design. I didn't recognize how much work BRS is being, it's proposed that they're getting. How did we get to these numbers where, and I'm just going to do off-the-top-of-my-head calculations, if they're starting at 51% in the beginning, weaning down to 25% at the end, they're still getting 30-plus percent, a third of the work of the entire project, which I thought the reason we split this project up was so that we could keep all of that money local with our local architectural firms.
Mayor Bocinski and Council President Sandy, I asked BRS just to give an estimate on what it would look like under the paradigm that I've discussed. Obviously, I know enough about, you know, the architect of record to local. They're going to want to do as much as possible. And as part of this was an estimate that I took a look at. So the blue bar and the green bar are local, either architects or other design professionals. And you're right, the red would be the recreational consultant or WTI, which is the aquatic specialist. This is intended to be an estimate, and I do understand that we want to make sure the local architect of record has a vast majority of the work. And if that's the intent of the city council that we do this, I can certainly, when we bring back the selected firm with the agreements that we weighed that more heavily, this was intended to be as an estimate to get some feedback from city council. I think the other thing is, even though we hire an architect of record, a lot of times when you do RFQs, basically the architectural team, they're going to bring to the city, in this case, their team that they want, okay? And what I'm saying is, the city, at this point, kind of know, we generally know what we want. And so we, or when you start hiring sub consultants, we want to have some input on who that part of their team is. Otherwise, sometimes you get a package. You know, you get their team to come in. And so really, what this intended was, that we'd get an architect of record, and then the city would have some feedback on what kind of team that we want around, surrounding that architect of record, and who's going to do what as part of this. And so that we would have some more control moving forward and not just take whatever the team that comes to us. That was, so that we'd have maximum flexibility in how we want to move forward as a project.
So a couple of things, Mr. Phelan. First of all, I thought we were going to have multiple architects of record. I thought we were going to separate the aquatics from the turf facility and have, at a minimum, two architects of record, one for each facility.
It's set up so that it could be two, or it could be one. Theoretically, it could be three, four, five. But it's intended that the selection committee would determine, based upon interviews or submittals, obviously, they'd be written, but they're electronic submittals. Those are going to be ranked, and then there likely will be interviews. And so the selection committee will be able to recommend who they feel is best moving forward, whether that's two, one, or a variety of that. So what I didn't want to do is restrict what a selection committee would want and what made the most sense to them.
Who's on the selection committee, Mr.?
Right now, I would propose, we haven't brought that back, but the selection committee right now, if our name would be Mayor Bocinski, it would be Council President Sandy. It would be George Hellier.
You're just making that up.
No, I'm not.
No, we do have talked about this.
It would be George Hellier from the Park District, and then also Mr. Scarputt, who's the chair. And then finally, representative from Ultra as the complex owner.
Likely Farkel, yeah.
Mr. Farkel, or his representative. So right now, we'd have five. You know, we've talked about, well, should we have some of the user groups that really played a key role in getting the word out? Should we have them? Right now, we haven't done that. So when Mayor Bocinski and I have talked about, those are the five key members. And we don't have any other sponsors currently, right now, that we can announce. We had hope we would have additional sponsors that we can name as selection. But right now, those are the selection team members, and I would help to facilitate that process for you. And really, this was intended just to get your feedback as we move forward in the selection process with this, because as we well know, this is going to be a historic, it is a historic project. We've worked hard on this, and over time, we've taken more and more of the project over. So we got a lot of blood, sweat, and tears in this whole project. But I understand there, I've been around here long enough to know, when we get down to architectural selection, there's always, with a project like this, there's always going to be angst whether you win or you lose. And that's why I want key members like you as the council president and our mayor to be part of the selection process, so that when we come back here, we have firsthand interviewers that were part of it, and you two.
Well, Mr. Phelan, I don't know what an average, if we're, let's be using round numbers, $100 million project, it could be $6, $7, $8 million to the architects, and we're proposing a third of that leaves our community. I would much prefer to see that number smaller, just because.
Maybe I could jump in here. Todd, when you put this together, was this BRS's proposal, I mean, I could only imagine as they're putting it together, they're saying, well, you probably need us to, I'm sure the local architect's going to say, there's things that they can do that we can probably also do. So was this a document prepared by them? Because I can get them saying, well, we should probably do more.
It was their probably optimum case, but, you know, I'm demonstrating their optimum case. Once we get an architect of record with the team that we really want around them, whether they're local consultants like mechanical engineers, electrical engineers, or certainly, we have WTI, which is the aquatic expert, we'll have a better idea on the architect of record that is selected and we want to contract with, what capabilities they have and what experiences they have in the various areas. And then we can determine what makes the most sense moving forward. That was really the intent.
I'm going to approve, Mayor. Well, actually, this was just for information, so that's all I needed. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, I guess we'd move on to.
All right, we'll move on to 5.5, the Grand Forks County Ramp Update.
Thank you.
I did that.
Mr. Veen, please.
My comments are pretty brief, actually. They probably associate with both 5.5 and 5.6. These were updates that came a week ago, and you're just going to carry them forward. So it isn't really that we're voting on them, per se. I just wanted it noted, I think, as I talked to you today, just a better understanding of the problems we're solving, so we can define that a little bit clearer. You and I talked about, and so I have that understanding. And then to understand the financials associated with it, especially compare the do-nothing to what we're trying to do, and is that, are there other solutions? So by all means, I don't want to get in the way of not moving forward with that, but just to let you know, we're looking for a little more information.
Mayor Bocinski and Councilmember Veen, I do understand that the county commission is going to take this up. My understanding is they're going to take it to their infrastructure facilities committee, which is made up of all five commissioners, and they're going to have some further discussions. I suspect we'll get invited to that meeting, excuse me, to have further discussions in that regard. So really, this is intended, again, the Grand Forks County is up against it financially, for many reasons, okay? So what we're trying to do here, whether it's the ramp or public health or the second floor of the police department, we're trying to make the most economic viable decisions that not only help the city, but help the county, because as we discussed last week, we're both city and county taxpayers. They're at their limit at this point. So we're trying to, again, take a leadership role and help partner with them to help make decisions for the greater good of the community. And we'll keep bringing the information back. Again, it's their choice. They're rather lukewarm if they want to do it. I think it's probably, you know, maybe two members of the county commission that would really want to take a serious look and make this happen, maybe three that are much more lukewarm. And we're just trying to see if we can be helpfully beneficial as part of the process. But again, we'll go to that committee. We'll work with them and ultimately bring this back to the city council for further update and consideration.
And I know, maybe just following up, because you kind of mentioned 5, I mean, they're both updates, but on 5.6, I know the county's going through a space utilization. They've made it very clear that they've, don't have the funds to build a facility. Obviously, we're maneuvering things so our police department can stay where they're at, PSAP can expand. But I think, you know, they've made it clear that the space that public health is leaving would be utilized by the county and that they need it badly. I mean, was that a fair assessment from what you've at least heard from their administrator?
I did, Mayor Bocinski, I did follow up with my counterparts, Tom Ford. Just to let him know clearly, you know, we're looking at the public health option. You know, for our own merit, we think that makes a lot of sense, being near City Hall and the hive and all the things that I explained last week. Those are all positives, but the real net benefit. Those are all positives, but the real net benefit is it frees up 10,000 square feet that I think they need, because I don't know where, how they're going to, they can't afford to build a building of 10,000 square feet at this point without going to the voters for increasing, what I was told by Mr. Ford, they can ask the voters to approve 10 additional, up to 10 additional mills for construction, or they can do a sales tax. And I think those are going to be, those are two options that they find are going to be quite challenging to ask the voters for. So they will use this 10,000 square feet, and so as we continue to work in the public health space, that will be used for all their needs. And my understanding is their largest needs are obviously with the sheriff's department and their state's attorney's office, and so it is helpful to them, I guess is the answer.
All right, but anything else? I think we can take 5.5 and 5.6 since there's no voting, if anybody has any comments on those two. Okay, please. Why don't we, is everybody comfortable in moving on from 5.5? Okay.
Okay, so the space that the health department has right now is 10,000 square feet, correct?
It's approximately 10,000.
And then what is the square footage of this new building?
It's 10,000, about 10,100. So it's equivalent to the same.
Okay, I was under the impression that it was smaller. So I was looking at, let me bring it up one second, I was looking at kind of like the retrofit, and it's going to cost $1.33 million just to retrofit. Like, is that a normal price? What does this space even come with? Because I can see that, you know, there's $240,000 for an electrical system, fire alarms, plumbing, HVAC, like, are we just renting a shell and then, so we get nothing?
Councilmember Osowski.
We have to pay for plumbing?
Councilmember Osowski, we are, it is, we are fitting that space up so it's offices. Basically, we're going to be putting in the mechanical, electrical, all the finishes. That 1.3, and what we asked Northridge, and Mr. Carlson's here, I think he might have done some of the estimate, we just asked, you know, we need a general idea of fitting up that bare bones space, how much is the estimate to do that? So the estimate that you see there is the estimate if they were to do it themselves. And so if we said, go ahead and fit it up the way we want it, that's what they're going to charge us, you know, minus some of the soft costs like IT and furniture and those sorts of things. So that really is a hard construction cost to fill that space out.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Phelan, in the sample lease agreement and under 4B, it specifically says the landlord is going to provide the tenant with a build-out allowance of $25 per square foot. So they're kicking in $25 a square foot.
So then, so it'll be 1.33 million minus the $25 per square foot that they will fund?
Which average, it's about 250,000, assuming it's the 10,000 square feet. So it's, right now, the fit up would be about a little over a million dollars with that, as Mr. Council President Sandy, with the discount of $25 per square foot.
Okay, and so why do we have to buy them like all new furniture? Can't they bring the furniture that they have?
That's another question we'll take a look at and bring back. Mr. Sandy brought that up. Is there a way to, excuse me, use that current furniture that's in the county office building? Would it be better to see if we can reuse some of that? Is it better off to leave that for the next tenant that wants to move into the third floor? But we'll consider all of that as part of the, coming back with the ultimate strategy, and that's one of our meeting points this week.
Do we own, sorry, I just gotcha, do we own the furniture? I mean, the lease was pretty, I'm trying to look back at this lease, that obviously had the sheriff's department and the police, in our police department, and then had our public health in the county building. Was that spelled out in there, or has there been a further agreement later?
I would, I don't know, I would presume that it's the city's office furniture. It's an asset of the city of Grand Forks in that space. I presume that's what it is. If it's not, I'll come back and let you know. But I presume the city of Grand Forks owns that.
I understand that the county, you know, doesn't really have too much money, but are they going to chip in at all for us relocating public health? I know that we are under contract to manage them, right? And so are they going to chip in anything to help retrofit this space? And are there any other options for public health to go? Beside, I mean, this is the only option we're being presented, and to me, it seems like a lot of money. So, I mean, what about the basement? How's that look?
I think 10,000 square feet is, that's a lot of space. You know, for example, when you look at the second floor of the Herald, Council President Sandy asked about that, the space that we're, you know, fitting up, if you will, as part of the growth fund, I think that's about 5,000 square feet in that area. So this is, 10,000 square feet is quite a large space. It would be hard to find something that's really located well to City Hall. And so we think this is the best option. Obviously, there are some concerns about even moving, you know, they do have nice space in the county office building, but this is a way for, you know, us to mutually find a good way forward. So I don't see any other alternatives at this point in time that would be feasible other than the Franklin on Fourth option.
I mean, I know that this is just an update. I would like to see some other options on maybe, I mean, right now, they're located close to Spectra, and I think that they kind of work together and things like that. I don't think that this building is that much further away, but I mean, it is closer over there. I believe there's a pharmacy over there, I think they utilize that also. And so I guess I would just like to look at other options before I fully get on board with, I mean, a 20-year lease also, right? Is that the minimum amount? Is there anything in there that's like how we can terminate the lease ahead of time? If, I mean, if something were to happen, I mean, that's a big commitment, I think.
I think we would have a termination clause, you know, we want, we ask for up to 20 years, and then there's the three 10-year updates, just because we're going to invest, as we talked last, a million dollars plus into this, into this space. We want to have some control over our upcoming history together. And so that was really our intent, is to make sure that we maximize at least for 20 years, that upfront investment that we're going to make in that. You'll see a finalized lease if we do continue down this path, that you can review with Mr. Gostad, we'll be working on that. But we're trying to provide as many options and as many outs as we can as part of the city of Grand Forks. So whomever's here in 20, 25, 30 years, there'll be plenty of opportunities to either stay there or to move on to the next space.
I guess I would like to see some different options on spaces that maybe public health would be more comfortable in instead of this. It's a lot of money.
So the other option we do have is, we certainly, we've talked to the county about the second floor of the police department, so they understand that's, you know, one of the things we've worked hard on, and so at least they're doing a space utilization, they're trying to find a place for the sheriff's office also, wherever that best fits them, that they can afford, because we want to start doing some of our own utilization of that second store of the police department building for both our police department and for PSAP, because that's going to be the best option for us and the most affordable, and something that we've been looking forward to doing for the last five years.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I would only point out, I mean, do nothing is certainly, you know, another option. That's been the case for 20 years and left the county and some of these co-mingled sort of facilities kind of in a mess. So I guess I'd like to see it cleaned up at some point, whether it's here or at another place now. It's been a long time of a temporary thing, and the police department has been very patient and trying to make it work, but, you know, things are different than they were 20 years ago, and the PSAP would certainly agree as well. So we've got to do something. I don't think do nothing's an option, but certainly looking at other possibilities is not going to hurt, so.
Anything else on 5.6?
Yeah, just quickly.
Mr. Weber, please.
It sounds like a lot of money. It's $1 million.
1.3.
Yes, more than, more than 1 point. And, but, if you were to go, in a previous life, I was in the food service business, and to go in and set up a pizza shop in a mall, you're going to, you have to spend this kind of money per square foot for the basic leasehold improvements, and that's part of the deal of setting it up. For 10,000 square feet, it isn't actually that much money per square foot compared to what a private business would have to pay going into a strip mall, for instance. This is a pretty good deal for a lovely new space right across from City Hall. You're talking about other space that we might consider. There's also transportation costs, there's other hidden costs of location, and this is a beneficial place in a lot of ways. So I think that's part of what needs to be considered as well.
Do we pay a lease now to that county building? Like, how does that work?
Currently, the sheriff's, there's a reciprocal lease, so the sheriff's department's in the police department, which that's going to change in the very near future. So that lease would be terminated, so we would ultimately be paying for a lease to be in the county building if they were able to find another place for other entities.
Okay, we still don't know if the county's going to help foot the bill, because then, I mean, we're going to have to pay to retrofit it, and now we have to pay a lease.
I think the conversation around the retrofit would be, you know, up for discussion. Long-term, and Miss Muller could, what's the new last name now? Wall, sorry. Could, you know, long-term, there's a split. I mean, the county's paying for, is it 30% roughly, give or take? So, you know, your lease, I mean, long-term, they're paying for their portion, 30% of the cost there.
So they just, so they don't give us a certain amount of money, they just pay for 30% of everything?
And that's ongoing, of their budget, the public health budget.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Osowski, we'd upfront the improvements, and then through the lease agreement, we would look for the county to reimburse us their, you know, 30% or whatever that percent is, knowing that we're the only ones that can probably upfront some of the capital to get it fitted up.
Mr. Cavami, please.
Yeah, I'd just like to add some perspective. I think if you were to build that space, you're looking at well over $400 a square foot. And if we're looking at occupying it for 20 years, that million dollars, we're spending $130 a square foot minus the $25 of outfit, it's actually a really good deal for what you're getting and the proximity and the quality that is presumed. It's expensive, but if we stay it for 20 years, that's really where you get your value. It's just perspective.
Mayor, if I would.
President Sandy, please.
And if, we could actually look at other options to see if there's another 10,000 square feet around here. We could do that. And as a matter of fact, there are three buildings being built right as you come up and over the overpass, which certainly we could get 10,000 square feet in probably any one of those buildings. We would have the same fit up, and from what I'm hearing, the commercial lease rates there are equivalent to what they are across the street. The only difference is it's not right across the street from City Hall, right? So why would we trade right here for something that's four blocks away? I'm not against, though, looking around to see if there's 10,000 square feet elsewhere available that's reasonably located. I think in a perfect world, the county, when they put on the addition to their jail, should have added space for the sheriff's department, and then none of us would be in this, in this situation in the first place.
I know, Mr. Phelan, you did do some, I think, take another look and connecting with a commercial, someone that involves, does commercial leases would be good. I know you had reached out and had looked around, at least in a proximity down here, so I guess follow up on that and see if something else has come up in the meantime and go from there. All right, anything else on 5.6? Again, that was an update. Let me pull my agenda back up. So now we are left with 5.7, so.
All right, proposed enhancements to the area of the greenway between 47th and 62nd Avenue South.
Mayor Bochensky, we had discussion on this, and so when we looked at what the survey respondents, and we know two things. Number one, the neighborhood area does not want more parking lots over there. So that's, that's, that's a death knell, we're not going to move forward with that. There was also concerns about up and overs or over the levee with a trail that was not appreciated either, so we're not proposing that. So really, what we're proposing is, as we get grant opportunities mainly from the state or garrison diversion, is that we'd have opportunities to submit grant applications, of which we'd bring forward those to the city council first before we submitted. But is, there seems to be some positivity regarding clearing out the area, creating a better fishing area that's already being, you know, fished, those are the kinds of things, creating some better pathways, and trying to interconnect it better with the existing trail system that we have. Those would be the things that we would, we would ask to move forward with. There seems to be a general positive view on those things as long as they're done appropriately. So really, what we're asking for that is those things that make the most sense in those areas that have some support, that we would move forward with those, continue in a kind of a conceptual design, and then look for grant opportunities that we would bring back to the city council for further review and approval.
I think just a couple of things to point out, that this wouldn't be an increase in taxes, we'd be looking at the design and state grants and existing greenway funds. So I think that's an important thing that people need to know. I didn't even know there was a fishing platform out there. So I'm excited to know that, and I think those, I mean, upgrading that platform, getting the trail system done right, cleaning, I mean, cleaning up maybe some benches, those are, I mean, those seem to be wins for everybody. I don't think that the parking and the overs, I mean, that clearly makes much less sense. But it's not, we're not approving the design, we're not approving anything other than looking further into it and trying to come up with a design and come up with grants that we can later approve. So I guess I'd like to see it go forward. I'd love to see that fishing platform get redone and look well, and I'd love to ride my bike there and be able to fish too, quite frankly, so.
Yeah, if I could, I'm on the garrison diversion board, we approve these projects twice a year, and it really fits nicely with what we've done in the past. We've done a lot of projects in Grand Forks with the Park District, but this would be, this would fit for either 50, maybe $75,000, so.
I'll take that as a guarantee, so we'll see. President Sandy, please.
I'm interested, Mr. Cavami wasn't here last week, so I don't know. I'm interested to know, since this is your ward and your neighborhood, if you heard from anyone and how, what kind of reactions you've received.
No, I was fortunate enough to go on the walk and visit the site, might have been a couple months ago, it was still green out, so lost track of when exactly that happened. And look, I think that area is full of litter, and it's really unfortunate the way, I too didn't really realize what all was down there and what was available. And so I think that I've only heard from maybe two people, one via email and one just, you know, happenstance, that were supportive of just doing something. And I think just anything that can improve access and ideally clean that space up.
All right, anybody have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to move forward to approve, trying to figure out how to get a grant for providing new trail system, clean it up and so on.
As related to the items that we believe would be beneficial. Okay, we have a motion that was seconded before it was finished. Now that it's finished, you still want to second it? Okay, all right. Any further discussion on 5.7? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. That will do it for action items. All right, moving on to item six, information items.
6.1, statement of changes, or statement of cash balances as of November 30th.
Thank you, and.
And 6.2, investment portfolio summary as of December 31st.
Thank you. We'll move on to item seven, approval of minutes and bills.
7.1, vendor list as it's attached.
We have a motion to approve the vendor list, pay the bills. We got a motion, President Sandy second from Ms. Osowski. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
And 7.2, minutes from August 14th and 21st.
Thank you. Do we have a motion as is, or any changes as is from, I got a motion as is from Mr. Weber, and a second from Ms. Lunskey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. All right, that brings us to item eight, citizen comments in the general nature. Do you have comments this evening, Ms. Lundmark?
We have one, Mary Ann Howe Hayward.
Ms. Hayward, thank you for coming in and waiting through the whole meeting.
I waited through the whole meeting and recorded five. I'll put you if you have one of these to check with us, so I can follow along. So because I'm nervous, I wrote this out, because it's going to be easier for me to stay on track and share with you. Oh, I'm sorry.
And I love the new council chambers. First time I've been in it personally, we watch you at home.
Thank you, let me, I'm going to get them all, I want to make sure when we start your timer that everyone's got the documents in front of them, so.
And since I am the only one, I hope that, I timed it, it should be five minutes, but I hope that you'll let me finish. This is a pretty important topic for me, I've been at it since October of 2022.
We got one? All right, please, please start.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Bochensky, President Sandy, and council members. In October of 2022, approximately 14 months ago, I became aware through personal experience there was a problem in the city of Grand Forks with loose unleashed cats and dogs. I could not reconcile how the same cat was at my doorstep multiple times in a six-week period. I contacted the Grand Forks Police Department, who connected me with the CSOs, who came and retrieved the cat each time. I became informed that the cat was being given back to its owner without any citations or fees being imposed. It was at this point I started looking into the state and city ordinances involving pets. After multiple phone calls with Sherry Lundmark, City Finance Office, Officer Drewlow at the Grand Forks Police Department, police officers, and the state. Forks Police Department, police officers, and the staff at the Circle of Friends, I began to reach out to you, my city council leaders, for help. I've been told this is not a problem in the City of Grand Forks. I have collected data and provided to you tonight, and I have an additional binder here, plum full, to let you know that it is a problem in the City of Grand Forks. And according to the recent article in the Grand Forks Herald on Sunday, on Saturday, January 13th, 2024, Regarding the Circle of Friends, Friends, the city pet problem is one of the major causes of their financial, financial issues currently. Ms. Tupa even says on our Facebook, and she posts, quote, "We really do need more fines put in place. We need tougher consequences," unquote. I asked, "How about if we enforce the ordinances we currently have and start collecting the fines on the first offense as indicated in the brochure that I have provided you, which is given out by the police department and the CSOs?" Item one is a copy, item one in your pamphlet is a copy of the city and state ordinances regarding pets. It should be five years and a, and 105 years, five days and 120 hours that we have a pet in our pound, according to state and federal. The brochure handed out by the CSOs and the police department regarding pets, these are not being enforced. In fact, the old fines are still on, are listed on the City of Grand Forks website. It also states in this brochure, quote, "Information as to the records of all dogs and cats impounded will be available to the public at all times upon request to the police and/or the finance department. I have been writing and emailing all of you and calling you since October of 2022. I still do not have the data." A copy of a CSO, item number three is John, the CSO at the police department, lists that he has updated the fines. When do we vote on the fines? Who decides? Item number four, Data from Officer Sampson from the Grand Forks Police Department, who tracks the number of animal calls and publishes them monthly. He has been my best resource. In 2022, there were 2,267, an average of six calls per day. And in 2023, there were 2,461, an average of eight calls per day. Of those calls in 2023, approximately 1,280 were handled by our highly trained police officers, as there are no CSOs on duty during late hours, real early hours and weekends. And there's charts in there to show you that. And it came from Officer Sampson. A copy of the list of citations that have been issued in 2022 and 2023, provided by the Grand Forks Police Department. We have only issued 15 citations in 2022 and 19 in 2023, but in those two years, we've had 4,728 calls regarding animals. It's an impossibility. I, I can't even fathom this. And item number six, Copy of an Email from Sherri Lundmark, provided by Mayor Bochensky this last week. She outline, outlines in her email, "There is not data and a tracking system in place for the collection of fines and license fees. She is unable to even provide yearly totals, as you will see on her email. I was told the city has an antiquated computer system, therefore they cannot collect data." So one thing that we talked about all night on the bridge, data, 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 numbers. But we don't do it as a city when it comes to this. Copy of a detailed conversation with Melissa, the CSO from Bismarck Mandan. She has been there for 16 years. I spent over an hour with her on the phone. I typed up all her conversation and notes and details. I provided it to, with you in item number seven, along with the documents they use in the city of Bismarck and Mandan. They do not have this problem. Everyone pays to get their pets back and they are fine. It is important to note that neither Fargo nor Bismarck releases an impounded animal without collecting some portion of the fee. I talked to Fargo. They told me that as well, CSOs. I have been informed by some council members that we cannot hold the animal here in Grand Forks if the individual is not able to pay. Missy made it very, very clear to me that it is theft of services if the owner refuses to pay the fees for housing and feeding their animal. Therefore, even if they give you $5 in quarters and they sign the agreement that is in that pamphlet, you now have a legal and binding contract. Fargo does not release the animals without being paid in full. There are so many benefits of enforcing the ordinances and collecting the fines. The pet owners would become more responsible. The city could hire another CSO and not have our police officers doing this job. The Humane Society, who is now about to close, the one on the Washington, can use some of the funds for the pets' care. Pets will be safe, warm, fed and cared for, and the citizens can finally walk the streets safely without being attacked. I again offer my services and information to assist in coming to some sort of resolution to the pet problem in Grand Forks. This pet was attacked in my neighborhood. I have collected lots of additional information and data that I am willing to share. I would like to be a member of the team to brainstorm and look for solutions so Grand Forks can be a safe community for everyone. And Mayor Bochensky, you said it perfectly for me a little while ago. To do nothing is not acceptable. Let us start doing something. I beg you so I can walk without being attacked.
Thank you. Thank you for coming in. Thank you for preparing all this information.
Thank you for the council members that did call me, returned my phone calls, have had conversations. You guys, please, please, can we do something?
All right. Does anybody on this council want to have a discussion on this at the moment? If you could hang out if there's any questions, otherwise we'd have to kick them in. There's a lot of information for them to go through. Um, I know we're going to have a larger discussion likely next week with, uh, Circle of Friends involved as well. But, uh, anything anybody would like to talk about at this time?
No, I support Mary Ann. I'm personally scared of dogs. I don't want dogs running up. And then just the other night I was, um, leaving Jersey Mike's and I saw this lady walking with her dog and her dog was off the leash. And, you know, I mean, if I had time, I would have turned around to say something. But I, I do think that pets need to be on leashes. I, I do think that we need to be collecting full fees from our citizens, especially, I mean, some of these people aren't even getting slaps on the wrist and their, and their pets are out wandering the streets. And so I, I do think that Mary Ann has brought something really important to our attention. And I do think that we should try to do something.
Yeah. Well, I certainly agree. I think enforcing the laws, if we're going to have laws on the books, they need to be enforced. And we need to look at, I think it makes sense to, to look at where the fees are at. And if they need to be updated, obviously inflation has come in pretty strong over the last, well, it's been decades probably since we've updated those. So I'd like to connect.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So that is another thing that would concern me then. So when you start talking and before you do anything, um, Officer Drewlow, CSO Drewlow has been wonderful. And thank you to the police department. They have worked with me as much as they possibly can. Um, this is the pamphlet that is handed out. It's in your brochure. Some of you are going to have the fine for a dog at large at $101 and some are going to have it at 31. Here's the dilemma. Officer Drewlow gave me about 10 of these one day. And so today I wanted to make sure I had one for every one of those packets. So I went down to get them. No one could find them. Finally, someone did go and dug in some box and brought me a bunch of them. I put them in your, your, your folders and I sat down to reread what I was going to talk about tonight and look at your folders. And some of these are at $526 for resisting and hindering. And the next one is at 201. So none of the rates are the same. It's not the same on the city website. Um, so there's so many problems in just our data and how we're doing things. I don't want to sound critical of all of you or the system, but I think we need to really look at and listen to somebody that's done so much research. We got to get on the same page. What am I paying if my dog is picked up today? Couldn't we, can't we have all the same brochures that we hand out? I'm confused.
Well, I think we can have a discussion. Obviously, we're not involved in printing brochures that are set out. So, but all right. Thank you. If you could, could take a chair, then we'll continue. Thank you.
Mayor, I was just wondering, I think this tied into the article on the Circle of Friends that was in the, in the paper here recently. What is our role or responsibility where we have a mill? Is that what we do to pay for, to, to Circle of Friends? That's, we have a half, a contractor or service with them that we're expecting for that mill?
Well, currently it's half a mill and then roughly $60,000 is, is what's proposed. But I, yeah, and I think this is a larger discussion because there's a difference between what a city is involved in with an impound. Um, there's a, you know, a more authoritative, you know, authoritative stance that I think the city needs to take. And that's clearly part of the problem. Uh, you know, right now, I don't think the city is interested in adoption centers and vaccinations and micro chipping, all these, you know, other things that have been co-mingled with what we're trying to do. So that's why I do think it's a bigger discussion. But right now, yes, there is a half a mill plus $60,000, which ends up being about $200,000, $199,000 and change.
Yeah. And so, so that is a part of what you see going forward is trying to get some resolution here because, um, you know, thank you.
Well, that's clear. Yeah. I mean, that needs to be part of the discussion. I think we've got to hit it from, from multiple, multiple levels. Um, and I do, I think that is planned for the committee the whole next week. Is that true, Mr. Phelan?
You are correct, Mayor.
So if you guys are able to come next week too, I think that'd be beneficial if you, if you have the, have the free time and are able to make it. So I guess any other discussions? I think we're all in agreement. We want our, you know, ordinances enforced. I think it's, it's always going to be a challenge because until you can get to a certain level, you're, you're expending hours, there's a cost extending, expending police officer hours that's going to be on, probably beyond what you're collecting early on and probably ever. But regardless, um, there's a reason that we have ordinances and we need to enforce them. So, thank you. All right. Any other comments for that or any other citizen comments this evening? All right. Uh, Mr. Phelan, move on to item nine, City Administrative Comments.
You are correct. We'll have it on the committee the whole, um, next week for, for their discussion. And I think for the record, uh, as per the story, the issue, financial issues of Circle of Friends are, go well beyond the City of Grand Forks. And so I want everyone to leave tonight to know that , um, the majority of the financial issues are unrelated to the City of Grand Forks.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Uh, item 10, Mayor and Councilmember comments. So we'll go through. Mr. Weigle, any comments? I don't believe he's on there. Ms. Osowski, any comments this evening?
Yeah, I have one. Um, I was a little bit disturbed to read in the paper about some allegations against Mr. Carrico and the knowledge of the city about those allegations and still hiring him. I, I think that we need to make sure that we are hiring ethical employees. And I don't really understand what he said. It says that he was moved into a position where he was coordinating resources for immigrants and refugees. Why, why, like, when I moved back to Grand Forks, I didn't have someone that coordinated resources for me. So I'm just wondering why we have someone that we are paying to do this? And what exactly, what kind of benefits, um, is he actually bringing to the table? Like, what is he actually doing is kind of my question. And I hope that the allegations aren't true, but I'm not really sure. Um, has he been proven guilty of anything? No?
No.
Okay.
He's not been charged.
He has not been charged with anything? Okay. Um, I do have, I mean, besides the newspaper article, I, I do find that the position seems a little unnecessary. I, I think that if we're going to be welcoming towards immigrants and refugees, we should also be, have like a welcoming committee or a person coordinating resources for our own American citizens. So it shouldn't matter if you move from Grafton or if you move from Somalia, we should all be treated the same.
Yeah, I agree. I would say largely his role has been related to workforce. When you have immigrants coming in, I don't know how many people from Grafton don't speak English. Probably most of them do. Um, there's been some, some work with that. He's also been a conduit for, you know, for example, you have different food trucks and vendors, which he's been a conduit between environmental health and different immigrant owned businesses that has been very helpful to certainly smooth things over and to explain, you know, what city laws are and how you have to follow those. Um, so I've seen tremendous value. I don't know if Ms. Bavette's here. Have you, have you had any, he's been an employee for about two years. Has there been any complaints or anything whatsoever that you've seen, uh, related to concerns of the individual? And granted, some of those are, you know, private, but give us a.
Good evening. Uh, there have been no complaints to date regarding Mr. Carrico.
Okay. I hope that that continues as long as he's employed for the city. So, because I don't think that sexual harassment should be tolerated at all. So, thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Ms. Lunskey, any comments this evening? Mr. Cavami? All right, Mr. Veen? Oh, sorry. Is that a no? I think that was a no. All right, Mr. Veen? All right, Vice President Weber, please.
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
President Sandy?
Um, yeah, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the, uh, the discussion regarding, uh, dogs and the facilities that, that we're currently contracting with. I do think we really need to understand what data we actually want. I know we need to understand what services we want, but it's true. We should be, we should know what we're getting and how many calls there are and who's paid and a multitude of other things that I don't even know about right now. So I'm hoping as part of this, we can actually have a, a good, solid discussion about what we actually want to know, moving forward related to, to dogs and the services that we're paying for. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. I don't really have any comments this evening. Thanks to everybody. It was a spirited conversation and some, I think some good, good things moving forward. So with that, I'd look for a motion to adjourn. Got a motion from Ms. Osowski, second from Ms. Lunskey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We are adjourned.